Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Forrester, my fellow commissioners, manager Bruce Swingle, city clerk Angela Torres, I would like to welcome everyone here this morning to our regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 11, 2021. It is now 9:00 a.m. I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Senator Whithead?
Here.
Honorable Mayor Forrester?
Here.
Honorable Paul Boffett?
Here.
Honorable Rondo Aragon?
Here.
And Honorable Francis Luna is out.
And she'll be on the phone. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine, okay.
Okay. We've called our meeting to order, and now you are present via phone.
Thank you.
You don't sound very happy, but that's...
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is silent meditation. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation, please. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Forrester will make the motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester, and we do have some amendments. So we will be removing, we'll go back and...
Why are we moving?
We're moving D2 to the bottom of D4 because of scheduling time. And then also on the second page, F2 will be totally removed. They're still continuing to work on that, and they'd like that on the next agenda.
May Commissioner Forrester make the motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted?
Yeah, one second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Aragon to approve the agenda for Wednesday, March 11, 2000... I mean, what did he say, March 11th? I don't know why. Wednesday, August 11, 2021, with the changes as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Senator Whithead?
Aye.
Honorable Mayor Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Boffett?
Aye.
Honorable Rondo Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item C, public comments. Again, I remind everyone about the three-minute rule. Please approach the podium if you have public comments. Any items or documents that need to be given to the commission, please put them in the little black box. When you get to the podium, identify yourself with your name and address. At this time, is there any public comment this morning? Mr. Dunia.
I'm here to take the questions with Ms. Dunia, Senator Charles, and the President of the Senate. President, we're 20-5, 21-22. You know, I sent significant requests this week to the city board, finding us a place where we can pay a meter reader. No one knows. I assume it's built at the rate that I'd say that because there is no service charge or line item charge. Nowhere, anywhere can anyone find me what we did for the unioners, electric or water, fire and swamp installations. Now, there isn't a charge supplement at $8, so I have to clarify a cash when I haven't received yet. Originally, it was told that was a meter leasing. I still don't have a clarification. I don't know. I don't know what that fee is for. All I know is the charge, the big dollars for reading my meter, and there's no cost studied on it, or it became a breakdown. It's just totally unfair of us. There's no way for $5 to have it back up the house two minutes to read a meter. I understand you, but you're just going to be gone with these meters now? Let's be fair about it, please. Do a cost study, guys. $5 is not there. Over in the United States, anything than $5 is free to use. It's just incredible. If you open this PR now, but please, guys, let's be ready for this thing. Do it right up there. I don't want to help you, but let's make it better.
Thank you, Mr. Dunia. The next on my list here is Ariel Dartery.
Good morning, Commissioner. Ariel Dartery, 55, Rose. Red, could be red or urgent reports on new study released Monday by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Ms. Dartery. Here, we might be scared for now, but worst of what is going on, like the Dixie Fire in California, we've got the state flood from Germany, or sea rise from Ireland nations. But even for us, it is unusually hot. The drop in element heat right now is well below 10% capacity, threatening not only the economy of our area, but our water supply. What can the city do to cut greenhouse gases, like a lot? The city owns a huge fleet of gas-powered vehicles. We can stop now and never buy one more of these gas or diesel vehicles. Our state has programmed to assist in the transition of such vehicles to renewable energies. A major step we can make by the city to establish goals for its own renewable portfolio standards. I urge the city to set up a climate task force of citizens and city personnel to track such a renewable portfolio. Let's do this with speed, so a proposal can be made before your commission by October. This would be a blueprint of how we can achieve a possible community on a time, on a time, on set timetable. Within our geography, we have an abundance of sun, wind, and thermal resources to make our city independent of any of these external fossil fuels. Having a renewable portfolio standards would enable the city to better direct efforts toward achieving its possible three goals. For instance, any new building should have a sound, smoking roof, putting on solar panels. These new buildings, too, should be equipped with electric vehicle charging setup. A plan for retrofitting older buildings for such demand should be a central part of the renewable portfolio. Right now, our city electric consumption may be a hair under 40% for renewables. Local individual solar producers who have their own personal renewable portfolios are leaders in the actual assistance to the city to achieve the city renewable portfolio standards. Lastly, I would, we will be treated to a presentation for a soundstage to maybe propose to show. Let's make sure that a facility is green, but also a media facility that has a community use component that serves intercommunication and information needs for our community. Communication is no longer giving directional other than the days when the show first aired. Media justice is people need along with environmental and economic justice.
Thank you, Ariel.
Is wise.
Thank you, Ms. Ariel.
Economic development.
Is there any other public comment this morning? Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is, um, we're speaking to a reporter, and I'm here to remind everyone that we have a new school election coming up in November. Three positions on the city commission will be available to citizens. They've been telling us what kind of, uh, fall, which is a breakdown, and I guess I need to be ready for it to grow. Uh, I think you just bring your driver's license. Anyway, you have to go with the county position.
Sophia, I think that this is a point of order. I think that, you know, you get...
It is not, excuse me, mayor, but it is not written on the website of the city or the county. The information is not written anywhere from anybody. This is public information, I'm just saying. I'm just telling people that on Tuesday, August 24, 2021, from 9:00 to 5:00, they can go to the county, see our county clerk's office and register to apply for a state commission position.
Thank you.
I won't make any comments on the people who hold those positions.
Thank you.
We know they are expensive, and we're bankruptcy, and we don't know, for those who are thinking about economic development in this town, that's what we thought about when we came here, 18 years ago. It's about four years later, we realize economic development. Our client was a data shareholder, Eric, a single person, from TRC, and we're very interested in it. So we gave what they have to do, because that's their interest. And I hope that if we do it, we'll think about the fact that we don't know this morning or when we get home, if our electricity is going to work, because our electrical system is caving in on itself. Erica had a transformer blow up in front of her house before she came to the meeting, and we don't know if we'll be able to flush out a toilet, because our water is a problem. So please, before you think about investing or getting the taxpayers to underwrite a meter grant, et cetera, et cetera, think twice, because you gotta go somewhere where it's safe and where you can guarantee good workers, good working conditions, and it ain't happening.
Right, Sophia?
Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment this morning? Anyone else? At this time, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is item D, presentation. First presentation this morning is D1, Certificate of Commendation to Sergeant Rafael Marine and Officer Anthony Zaborstey for the professionalism and fast response to a resident intruder calling. I'll turn this now over to our chief, Gepher Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Andrew Swingle, for the opportunity to share some good news. And I am very proud to stand here and award this certificate of commendation to these individuals. To give you a little background, July, end of July of this year, we had a call regarding a flood intrusion on Cabaya Road, and I've asked the resident who was approaching to give these two officers recognition. Please, governor, just to come up and give the commission just a quick synopsis of what occurred, if you're sure of it, right?
I think they always go to use the clock.
Well, thank you.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna give you a hug. These are my heroes right here.
They are our heroes.
Yes, absolutely. I was around 12:00, I'm at the shore, 12:30 at night, manning for my window. He broke through my window, and he was coming through my window, and I was stuck in my back room. But I ran towards him, and it scared him, and he went out the window. And then I went to check the crimes in the back, and then I saw his bag in the back, saw him. And then he talked to me and said, "You don't need to call the policeman," and ran back through the window. Went back through the window towards me. Then I went out, calling 911. And Sergeant Marine had to gotten there so quickly, he still would have been going after him, you know? And Officer Zaborstey would have gotten there so quickly, and saved him, because it was like, you know, freaks me out that. And the fact that they got there so quickly, and they apprehended him so effectively, and then went through the house so efficiently, you know, in a time when we want to make police officers the bad guys, and criminals the good guys, this is a time, and it's a great thing for the community, because we need to remember that our officers are there for us, and they're there to protect us, and these guys are totally dedicated to their craft, and, you know, police officers, and you have to remember that, you know, they're not just getting us tickets, they're saving our lives. And the fact that they got there so quickly, and got this guy so fast, you know, it could have been, you know, stuff like this, seconds. So, you know, I love the police department here in TRC, and we need to say good things about TRC, because there are a lot of things. I've only been here for a year, and, you know, things fall between the cracks, there's some of this, that, and the other. But these guys are patrolling the area, and they're doing a great job. I mean, I sit in my front yard, and I see cops goodbye, you know? So they're, they're watching out for me still. So I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I just want to end with this, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Andrew Swingle, and the community, that there is a long part of law enforcement, which, you know, people may think, "Well, that's what we get paid to do." Exactly right, that's what we get paid to do. But this is just an example of a situation that created a dangerous scenario that could have ended much more, a lot worse than it would have, and we're fortunate that it's come, that our officers got there in time. And so not only how they responded before the situation, during and after, the aftercare that law enforcement provides, supports, provides to victims, we're a victim that comes still secure in her home, because she knows that we have a dedicated law enforcement agency. And so it gives me great pleasure to present these two certificates of commendation to Sergeant Rafael Marine and Officer Anthony Zaborstey for the certificate of commendation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. And thank you for coming and talking to us, and talking well about our police department. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda this morning is item D3, presentation of the USDA Main Street District MSD Waterline Improvement Project, Wilson and Company.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, please, the manager, Ms. Clerk, so thank you for having us here today. My name is Afellah Dean, this is Mark Nassi, we're both, we're both a company, and we have been working with the city on your Main Street District, one of our projects. So we're here today really to signify to y'all, as we've been here in the design, and we're going to be shifting into the construction phase or the bidding phase for construction, we wanted to come and just give it all a break. And again, Mark is actually been the lead engineer and the manager for the project, so I won't let him go through that. But, you know, throughout the presentation, if you have any questions, please, stop and ask some questions like that, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, all, and that was a great presentation with law enforcement. And we are, so nice to see that. So I am the design engineer for Wilson and Company for your Main Street District Waterline Improvements. I have a listening presentation going to give you the overview of the project team, the project overview, and the current schedule, and we'll just break down the report. Project team is Wilson Company, the design engineer on it, we've been working, and we helped the city with the preliminary engineering report, and helped the city establish the funds to support this project. USDA is the funding agency for it, and that's the US Department of Agricultural Development Program, and they are, they do, I didn't know, I didn't do the work, but I can just help with infrastructure throughout the New Mexico. And then the city TRC, instrumental in the whole process, the Tracy, that's instrumental in the SC, you're all, water, our utility director, and a little project force. Project overview is, this is a picture, I hope you can see it, it's just really the Main Street, you know, main and Broadway of the community. The system has some old pipe, and so we're upgrading the pipe and the size of the pipe. We're running parallel lines on either side of Broadway, so it makes it easier, so you don't have to destroy the road every time there's a leak or anything, making it a little cleaner to show the road. And our main, we're putting the shoulder of the road, too, so it's not even over the main. We're also replacing all the service lines, the water meters in that area that we're covering. We also do some unique things to help mitigate the construction. This photo shows, is red, is the open trench construction, and we do have some pipe burst in there, or use the existing pipe, put a new pipe in it, and then tie it on the services to help minimize the disruption of both roads, and you guys get so much from, you know, trying to keep nice, especially if they see, we're just using for, I don't know, every day, so, and we also have some horizontal professional field, and this process will take some people off the surface, but we will have, I think, we'll be, you know, the rural water service, so people should have minimal impacts and that whole thing, so the parallel system moving together, like they bring a system up to, up in running efficient, with the testing, the bacterial testing of our water. So it'll be a little bit, we'll be supportive, but the business is going to be fine. And another biggest movement is your Coast Street booster station, all your wells, if you don't know, go into this Coast Street booster station, and distributes the water pretty much throughout the rest of the system. So it needs a new gas coordination system, so a new gas coordination system, with that gas coordination system, putting a metering fault where all your wells go into this giant line, and this gas coordination system will be there how much water going through, so make sure that you have the right amount of flooring going in there consistently to keep water safe. And we did, decent generator will be installed there to boost the pump's coordination system because of power outage and any of those, that type of thing. Also, we're installing a new storage tank in there to help with reliability. Right now, the current storage tank there is a little small, you guys cycle through that one, I'd say about four, five times to 50. And this will allow it to be like one and a half times a day, to keep the water, you know, so fresh, that it keeps those pumps running on very quickly. Probably give you a lot more information if you really want to know what's going on.
No, thank you.
And then we're also upgrading the SC system. SC system is upgraded, wastewater system, so we're integrating that system and getting the main points of all where your water is, the tanks, wells, and booster stations, so it's easier, and it gets earlier mornings, out of tanks, that type of thing, to help keep the water in your system, for how, especially during the hot season now, and you guys have some troubles with that. And the last one here is, there's the existing booster pumps in the Coast Street station, the big pumps, if you need, at the 250 watt hour, they, we are replacing them with variable speed pumps, and that means really, you'll be able to run at a lower speed and a longer run, and it will really help with the pressure issues that we see through the first speed and fourth speed, and make much run, around a slower speed, and it needs a lot of, it takes a lot of, too, national speed, but for managing it that way, it'd be a lot more energy than it would be for the city. Yeah, and like Chris, guys, we did a, we did a report in 2019, USDA funded it in September 2019, $94 million. The letter of conditions is the conditions that go on if USDA provides to the city, and the city has to meet all kinds of information associated with that to secure the whole grant combo. Tracy has been instrumental in that, so really appreciate all of her hard work. We developed a steering committee early on, associated to the meeting concerns, and so forth, that we just sent out, so families do businesses in there around February of 2020, and we made sure we got this addressed in the construction package. And then, oh, the US Health, a year ago today, you know, today's, it was a year ago. And then, you know, we completed 30% design in May, 26% in November, and last week, we finalized that, and I had set with the USDA, they had some comments, we sent them all back on Friday, USDA approved the bidding, and we'll point, we need to want a girl to check out for the ongoing construction. The advertising is planned for September 16th to 21st. We will have a pre-bid conference in October, and then we'll have a bid opening just before big spending, and then in that process there, we get to the holiday, I guess, kind of, we really should be pushing the construction, just got to the first of the year, and, you know, start the first, you know, a great start. And yeah, it'll do wonders for, of course, your supplies and your equipment.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
Just looking forward to this. It's something, sorry.
Go ahead.
We've needed this for a long time, and just want to thank you guys for all the hard work you have done to get to this point.
And if you ever have any questions, you can call me, right? You know, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Not a mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, just one question. What specifically are you going to do to address the pressure issues that we're having?
Well, the only pressure, this was done 2019, before it was realized, yes, pressure problems just north of Main Street in there, this project, which was to help economic development of Main Street and, you know, that part of it. There's some pressure problems north of there. There is, there's a main transmission line that goes from Coast Street to Morgan Street, and when those pumps turn on 3,000 ounces a minute, all of the people between Coast and Morgan, the pressure is now about 30, 40, you know? People know, "Oh, I'm taking a shower," and, "Oh, yeah, this is the pressure that I like," you know, that type of thing. But that, you know, help mitigate that pressure, which surges in the system, in the lower half of the system. We did write it down, we're working on writing that, through the VR, that's approved by USDA, to address some pressure problems. The system got your high tanks up there at Secretary's Road, and the idea is to really utilize all that water, they're available, to keep about half full, because if they fill it up, the pressure gets too much down in that low area. So we have a plan to put in three main PRBs to help balance, you know, a little more redundancy, and it's bad, these are for the Morgan Street zone, to go farther out, there's still be a limitation to stuff up in the far north side, from, and right now, it's rather than just a water conservant. So this is, the engineer report that we're completing now, will help address the pressure, which helps address your aging infrastructure, because what happens is you get the surges and spikes, and that's what causes all the leaks, you know, on the system. So if you mitigate that, you can extend that aging infrastructure, you know, farther down the line, and then, that's why we have fixing and damages and pumping, you know, perception of your waters, and, you know, you guys have a great utility department, they just, you know, a great job of what they have to do.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your comments. The next item on our agenda this morning is item D4, Presentation of Truth or Consequences Transportation Safety Plan, Lee Engineering and N M D O T. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Debbie Hudson, and I'm the Truth or Consequences Regional Transportation Safety Plan Project Manager. I work as the Southern Planning liaison from the planning division at N M D O T. N M D O T planning has been leading this effort since January of 2021, in partnership with N M D O T District One, City of Truth or Consequences, and local TRC area residents, businessmen, and agencies. We build these plans from a multimodal and community-wide perspective. Our process uses an advocate-driven approach as a foundation for the planning process.
get the surges and spikes and that's what causes all the leaks, you know, on the system. So if you mitigate that, um, you can extend that aging infrastructure, you know, farther down the line. And then, you know, that's why we have fixing and colleges and, uh, pumping, you know, perception of your waters and, you know, uh, like, you know, you guys have a great utility department and just, you know, a great job of what they have to do.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your comments. The next item on our agenda this morning is item D4, uh, Presentation of Truth or Consequences Transportation Safety Plan, Lee Engineering and NMDOT. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Uh, my name is Debbie Hudson and I'm the Truth or Consequences Regional Transportation Safety Plan Project Manager. I work as the Southern Planning liaison from the planning division at NMDOT. NMDOT planning has been leading this effort since January of 2021 in partnership with NMDOT District One, the City of Truth or Consequences, and local PRC area residents, business owners, and agencies. We build these plans from a multimodal and community-wide perspective. Our process uses a data-driven approach as a foundation for the planning process. We view this as a partnership where we seek out stakeholder and public engagement. In the development of this plan, we have held two stakeholder meetings and two public engagement meetings. Uh, each of these meetings has produced good comments and suggestions which have been included in the plan. NMDOT has engaged Lee Engineering to provide technical engineering assistance to the plan. Uh, Paul Varco is with me today and he will be providing a brief overview of the Truth or Consequences Regional Transportation Safety Plan. With that, I'll turn this over to Paul.
Thank you. Good morning.
Uh, again, my name is Paul Varco, Lee Engineering, and, um, I'm, uh, um, as Debbie talks about, is a cooperative plan with stakeholders. The project began in February. Uh, it's part of a government-funded, um, program that has a, uh, September deadline. So we limited to, um, ideally some of the things that we would normally collect, uh, have a season and a pandemic and, and a rain, of course, uh, definitely. But, uh, in order to use the money, we really need to much on the project. Uh, it's just, uh, uh, got a question in February. A series of stakeholder recovery meetings, uh, regional analysis, uh, all of our second projects. Uh, so we're right in the latter parts of the report developments at this point and, um, that document should be, uh, published by September. The, the plan focused on three corridors, um, the new school, front corridor, a small corridor, and, uh, the new, uh, project, uh, couple. As I talked about, this is a pretty long project and the information that was, in the first part, we, we had the, the, uh, at this, uh, corporation, uh, information. So currently, in general, the presentation, there's a, uh, just a little bit of, uh, preface on what the study's focused. Uh, this is completely by the National Transportation Safety Organization. And it basically is finding, say, that the cause of a pedestrian mortality is exponentially with the speed of the vehicle. So you can see that in the, uh, 20 mile an hour, that, that, that 10% right in the, uh, 20 to 30 mile an hour collision, almost 80% of those, um, crashes gave a, uh, pedestrian out. The other part about the plan is that it is, uh, basically a tiered approach on its recommendations. Some things may be reduced near-term, uh, approaches, particularly six months or even more. And GIMs items generally have, uh, one stakeholder that you involve, uh, is generally counted against those other things. And as you go through tiers, uh, they increase in coordination, um, and design time, uh, safety, uh, to, to improve. And there's a few, uh, items even outside of this that are just ideas for the community, uh, which is, uh, in interest and, uh, should say, uh, a lot of, uh, that, uh, things, uh, improvements. Uh, the other thing you find with recommendations is they're kind of, uh, it's not too hot. Uh, it's not prescriptive, it's not recommendation. It says, this is what you have to do, is should be, you know, uh, endorse these, uh, recommendations. This is not, uh, uh, having these documented can also help your ability to get from, uh, future, uh, uh, sources, uh, so, uh, I agree. So I'll walk through the corridors. Uh, some of the findings and recommendations are, uh, very similar throughout there. So I'll try to, uh, uh, see, uh, those. New school law and Persian street, uh, there by the schools on the west side of D. This is, uh, a series of data correction, um, in February, uh, we did find that, uh, seeing is a problem. Um, there's opportunity for personal safety improvements and consistent payment. Uh, that's what we're, uh, that's what we're focused on. There's an opportunity along the roadway to, uh, improve the, um, guidance that you provide the drivers. We find that, uh, providing with the lane lines and the center line does have a speed reduction. Even if you do that and you reduce those lanes to 11 being wide, uh, with, uh, the road, uh, Coast Street, by using a more narrow lane, finds the driver a little bit and will help with compliance on, uh, this. This year, the traffic, you see that the wider lanes are on the right with the highest speeds and the narrow lanes are on the left of the road streets. So that, that, uh, as I talked about compliance of manual, uh, this traffic here displays sign improvements wherever you go. Um, updating the D school, ascending the sun, uh, there's a potential to, uh, have that, uh, things, uh, actually, uh, in, uh, to the present, uh, as, uh, uh, and, uh, you get that, uh, uh, school, uh, ascending. Another, uh, my thing is that sidewalks in this area are, uh, absent. And so the space approach is, is to improve the east side of the roadway first, uh, being that also, you see, uh, that'll be a, uh, neighborhood, uh, to the schools and the, uh, sidewalk path to, uh, the roadway. There are a few opportunities on campus to include a, uh, through 88 apartments. Uh, one of the things you'll notice there in the job, uh, as a case of attorney, is that, uh, questioning that too, uh, on the roadway, they walk through the apartment. And somebody thought this would be there with some existing sidewalks and maybe improve afterwards to, uh, give them space where there are a lot of people. On the east, uh, and north side of those, there are two, uh, staircases that are not 88, so they, uh, it's due to longer term and the opportunity to, uh, switch paths. So, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, similar. Similar progress, uh, the municipal side of the road, uh, it's, uh, the sidewalk, uh, and the commercial area on the east side of the sidewalk, uh, to get access to school, um, is more, uh, um, uh, same, same, same type of progress. Uh, there's opportunities for, um, consistency with signing, uh, updating those, uh, signs, uh, speed feedbacks on it as well. As you see here, there's a very, um, use of the turnout and symbols. We want to make sure we're, you see, uh, symbols down there. Uh, the refresh on the crosswalks, uh, before, uh, uh, stop one. Uh, one of the new, there's two, uh, specific crosswalks there between the schools, uh, not only just against the pavement markings, but the crosswalk is used to use, uh, so it's called our traffic gateway. And we put this sign, uh, here to the S3 on the hillside and on the yellow side. And that has, uh, very, uh, shown, uh, some, uh, uh, protection, uh, that's, uh, that's one. Uh, there's a segment of sidewalk that is, uh, is absent. It's like a, uh, the crosswalk, uh, to, uh, jump off here, uh, to, uh, the other side. So, uh, yeah, we talked about the gateways and this is, uh, and finally, in the, the bigger picture of the final recommendations, there's a, uh, section of sidewalks on both sides of the road. What we find here on Smith Street, uh, things there, uh, very similar set of recommendations. Uh, 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 where they just point out, uh, future signs. Again, crosswalks, uh, that's for gateways, uh, uh, right in front of the school, uh, you see the area, uh, folks are playing on the north side of the, uh, the, uh, again, sidewalk, this is on the west side of the road, uh, from the, uh, from the school. Uh, this is pretty important to make sure we have a, uh, clear. East is that if you have those walking around, uh, near the school, the school, uh, on the side is not really prepared. You see those, um, proceedings, so we do want to make some improvements, uh, being there, uh, sure so that we can, uh, possibly, uh, uh, that's, uh, uh, those, uh, again, all, basically all of these, uh, uh, these signs, uh, uh, with those markings and, uh, here, uh, other, uh, SUVs, like, uh, shop style, uh, silver, uh, uh, subs, uh, that as well. In the downtown section, we look at these as a parent public, uh, uh, through those, but you'll also see because of such a, uh, uh, very similar school, uh, may have those same recommendations are, are made. Uh, there's two pieces here. One, the previous corridor was, uh, uh, they are seen, uh, is one, is, you know, uh, and the other part of that is that, uh, the, and the structure of that, uh, 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 second, uh, crosswalks, uh, supposed to be, uh, that said, over time, things have changed a little bit and there are, uh, many, uh, uh, you see sidewalks, uh, uh, definitely need to get that addressed, uh, for potential turners, uh, sidewalks, uh, turners, that's maybe cost by choosing, uh, we should, uh, uh, on those. Uh, you see the center that, uh, we need to, uh, include, uh, those, uh, 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 sidewalks and sidewalks, uh, and, uh, uh, the, uh, 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 right, uh, 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 right, uh, 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 another thing that's, uh, uh, public is that downtown is real caption, uh, uh, and you have parts, accessible parts, so the opportunity is all the side streets, um, to include some of those, uh, uh, guidance, uh, 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 number of, uh, uh, spots for, um, traditional parking spaces and still has, uh, uh, including those, uh, 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 speed compliance was also some, uh, 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 accessibility, uh, signs, uh, 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 We, um, we observed, uh, just in our, sort of, there's a few, uh, going the wrong way for a, a small section of the corner, but, uh, drivers do not exist, uh, that, and we want to correct some of that, um, again, maybe an opportunity to do a picture of network connectivity, um, the short term is to, uh, pay some unions or, uh, social, uh, provide that guidance, and, uh, share those, uh, and then finally, and the big picture and things that may, um, may help in the community is there's an opportunity to do, like, this is just a, uh, a simulation, um, of what that could look like, um, first part of that is the D E T has a policy in there, so we're definitely not go too far, um, before researching that policy, um, but I think one of the things that we like to do, while trying to tell you about speed, is, is walk the drivers down, uh, from, you know, seven miles an hour, pureway, that's forty-five, uh, which feelings do you have, but we like to also reinforce that, not just in the regular life, some, uh, pre-markings, and the more that we can, we, every time you do a, a speed change, you change something about the environment in the condition, the driver, that this is a new space, and we, uh, so one of the things that AIG does is to reinforce that environment as well, um, the enhancement markings, the objects in the street, all, all of those things, uh, point that drivers to another new space, and to, uh, create more, uh, shared space, crosswalks, and so that's what it for maybe, David, uh, bigger picture. Additionally, in the community, you went off the border, but, uh, I, regardless of , uh, a lot of this, is there's opportunity for the AIG, uh, between the two roads, um, here, in the distance, is a, um, is a core feature of our community, uh, information, uh, for AIG to that, is, is, uh, that's actually, additionally, opportunities to, uh, to write, paint on those roadways, and some of the drivers, if they don't have four existing, you know, they, uh, they, uh, and then, uh, enforcement, uh, has, uh, some other things, and then the big picture is, uh, being a, as a small part of this community, is there's opportunities that have been, uh, suggested to do this through that, and going back to the business, I, uh, because it is, um, designated that, and it's operated by the D E T, the restrictions that they have, and they, they did mention that if the community wanted to do more with the, uh, over, yeah, huge impact, it also means something, or things like that, but that's not, uh, true, they're, they're, uh, and then another one is, uh, providing, uh, in China, you, uh, there are funding sources throughout, uh, for some of the names, uh, low and through, don't do with, uh, the, uh, truth or consequences, there's, uh, there's, uh, there's a pedal problem, say, uh, say across the school, uh, transportation problem, uh, and all of the, uh, uh, so, uh, so, yeah, the D E T is, uh, in the document, and then, um, we saw how, uh, many, uh, together around you, you know, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh,
Daniel, for your presentation, great job, are there any, uh, comments from the commission? Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, Paul, uh, you gave this presentation, uh, more, much more elongated presentation to the community, uh, not a month ago, uh, I think that presentation was an hour, hour and a half long, that was a phenomenal presentation, it was excellent, uh, you got the Reader's Digest version today, but this is a, a plan that we can immediately implement, a lot of solutions, uh, early, quickly, uh, at little to no cost, so, great job on the plan, I, because this is not something we're going to put on the shelf, this is something we can actually use, so thank you for that. Deb, as always, you provided the D O T leadership on your end, so, as always, you did a fantastic job, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Also, the presentations, um, I did listen to a, a couple of them, I know that they've, you've had them on, um, teleconference and, and via the phone for the, the last few times that you had them, and I liked the participation from the community, the involvement and the questions that have been asked, and, and ideas that the community has presented to you, so, and, and you guys did a great presentation, uh, you know, and those, uh, presentations that you gave, so, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next, uh, presentation this morning, um, is Deep, we're going back to Deep Two, presentation regarding ideas to create, for creating and building a production studio in Truth or Consequences to shoot the Truth or Consequences television show. Um, we'll get Ralph on the line in just a few minutes, and I think we'll have Noah, uh, Rob Rubenstein, and Rudy Vissera, is that correct? Thank you, let me go ahead and try to get, uh, Ralph on the line this morning. Francis, are you still with us? Francis?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm going to try to connect another, uh, another call, so bear with me, okay? Ralph?
Speaking.
Good morning, this is Mayor Wiegert from the city of Truth or Consequences, you are now on teleconference with us in our meeting.
Thank you very much, how you doing, Mayor?
I'm good, thank you for being with us today.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm not there live, but probably better for all of us, that, uh, we kept our distance with, with COVID students, our family right now.
That's correct, we're, we're trying to connect with another call, so bear with us just a few minutes.
Okay, fine, all right, thank you.
Are you still with us?
Yep, I am, I'm well in.
Thank, thank you, thank you, now, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to, um, I do have, um, a couple of other people here in the audience, I have Noah Rubenstein and Rudy Vissera with us, good morning. I think they're trying to get their power points up.
What's the weather like today there?
The weather is warm, we've had a little rain, but it's nice.
Thank you, uh, thank you, this is, uh, I look extremely relaxed, so...
You are.
Extremely comfortable, because I haven't played everything in the last three, last night, extremely wonderful.
Nice, look, thank you, and I'm glad you were able to enjoy that.
It's, uh, it's magical, and I, uh, I can see why people, uh, uh, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council members, Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity to introduce you to some of my colleagues and friends, in my opinion, have a very exciting idea for the straight state, as a fellow New Mexico, born and raised and educated here, uh, in this great land of Manhattan, I was taken back by a friend of over twenty-five years, Rob Rubenstein, uh, who was introduced to me by a, uh, partner of mine, uh, Ralph, his father, along with his brother, Rich Permeto, and the success of Coca-Cola Company, and positioned us in extremely, uh, in high global events, they helped us establish a global footprint, and signature events such as the World Cup and the Olympics, just to name a few. In other words, Ralph is a master of the signature events, and making them sustainable, but enough of that, you know, we just connected the job on the moment, uh, Ralph, the audience is yours.
Ralph, you're on.
I'm on?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know what, thank God it's not with video, because usually when they say that I perturbed, and I don't think you'd like to see that.
Right, you just never know.
It's, it's, it's not one of my skills, that's for sure, um, but I could sing off tune, but, um, good af, good afternoon from New York, it's afternoon here, about a second, good morning to you guys, in, uh, Truth or Consequences, uh, this is really a special moment for me, um, we've now owned the IP for a little bit over a year, and, uh, it's always with my vision to have a honest and open dialogue with the city to see how we could be of value, and how the city could be of value to us as well, in an open partnership. We want to partner with the city to create an amazing entertainment, as well to promote the city to its fullest potential, uh, fortunately, you know, God's grace and things that Rudy talked about, we have a global forum, we talk to people every single day in multiple countries, in the past, it was called Coca-Cola or M M R's or Coca, or Malice, today, a lot of it's around the, the iconic brand called Name That Tune, uh, which my family owns globally, the form of our partnership with the city will develop over a period of time, it'll be natural and develop in its own way, and today you'll hear from the guys, my team over there, our team, who I'm very, very proud to be associated with, a bit of what we're thinking about, um, the one consistent factor would be not to be, you know, too, um, you know, try to be too creative, is that when you say the truth, we really mean the truth, in terms about what we do, and what we mean, we say truth in terms of Truth or Consequences, or anything that we do, it has to be great, whatever we do, together or our own, we must come out with amazing TV show, we want to do an amusing facility, it must be state of the art, that's consistent with the, the image of the show, of the city has today, after the launch of the space, you know, exploration journey, and the consequences here can only be positive, we must let people know who we're working with that we're very professional, and full of integrity, and we've been business for over forty-five years, for the reason that our word is our bond. A little brief background, I am the CEO of the family business, um, as Rudy talked about, we, we worked with a Coca-Cola company for thirty years, or not more, and a lot of it was global interaction, as he said, the Olympics, the World Cup, and that took us to about forty or forty-five countries, and while doing that, we encountered all kinds of cool stuff, ranging from development of the Whitney Houston Coca-Cola Diet Coke stuff, to, um, the Disney global relationship out of, executed, Columbia Pictures purchased by Coke, and then, at one point, I owned twenty percent of Michael Jackson's global merchandise rights, uh, we've done a lot of stuff in the entertainment industry, from all kinds of angles, and about ten or ten and a half years ago, when the opportunity came up to buy Name That Tune, uh, we grabbed it in a second, we got the phone call, by the end of the phone call, we made the purchase, not even knowing what TV format was, to be honest, but thank God, we've learned over time, and today, Name That Tune is in many, many countries, supported by a multiple strategic campaign, uh, what we call three sixty degrees, television, radio, uh, special events, merchandise, uh, anywhere, you know, inside schools, uh, one of the things you're going to see shortly, hopefully, we're launching a campaign with Name That Tune tied into, uh, music therapy for kids and adults, because we, there's all this information today, that, you know, music is an amazing tool to get the brain going, um, and everything that we've done there, we were hoping to recreate and use it better for truth, the big advantage that truth has, obviously, that there's an amazing talent sitting there to be associated with us, you know, we made a joke recently with, uh, Fox, that we should create our new city called Name That Tune, uh, just in order to have some fun, the way we think we're going to fun with truth, they didn't think it was very funny, but, um, over the past year, they have been very supportive of Fox Network, and Name That Tune started January sixth on, um, TV, and then concluded in March, so, we are very, very excited, we thank you very much, now, it's my opportunity to introduce you to a gentleman that you all know quite well, Mr. Lovelace, and I look forward to working with you all.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ralph, uh, at this time, I think that, uh, Noah is going to speak again, hold on just a second.
This is, uh, this is Rudy, sorry.
Oh, excuse me, Rudy, sorry.
When Ralph called me, and filled me in on his vision of Truth or Consequences, I was extremely excited by the project and the potential that's been created to, to make to my home state, I immediately reached out to Lovelace Johnson, who had been a friend, a business partner, and a fixture in New Mexico political and business scene for this phenomenal vision, and this beloved adoption of New Mexico as a state, and he loved it tremendously, and specifically, his community involvement in the city of Truth or Consequences. Lovelace loves this, this community, he loves the people who embraced him here, and he answered my call without hesitation, he said, let's make Ralph and Noah's vision a reality. Lovelace, Lord yours.
Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Commissioners, and thank you, uh, for having us here, uh, I know some of you, and all of you who know me, know that I love this community with my whole heart, and I've been very committed to this town, uh, for many, many years, and as you know, we, we did, we tried to bring a hip operation here, and we're still going to do that, we had a little pickup, I had COVID, it was, it was a mess, but, because I love this city so much, and because Rudy, when you called me instead of others, I want you to have a conversation with the guy who purchased the entire Truth or Consequences property from the Ralph Erbers family, matter of fact, I think they might have sent Bruce the letter, uh, to acknowledge Ralph and this idea of bringing Truth or Consequences to Truth or Consequences, and so I'm excited for Cliff, who I'll be introducing momentarily to tell them all about, not only the ideas for television show production here in the state, but also the other big idea that, that could become a huge, inappropriate, family, tourist attraction for this city, and make it a, a hub of new revenue that you value down here, and very family-friendly, and family engaged, and the kind of, uh, idea that is consistent with the values of this community, and so, when Rudy asked me to, uh, help me contact the city, it was my pleasure to do so, it's been an honor to meet our new friend, Cliff Marks, I wanted to say a few things about them both before I turn over to Cliff. First of all, Rudy Vissera is the longest-serving senior executive in Coca-Cola's history, he was the local vice president for Latin Affairs for many, many years at Coca-Cola, and is the officer of the company, and, uh, can really bring a lot of value, because he is from New Mexico, uh, he also loves this, with his whole life. Cliff Marks, uh, has spent many years at ESPN, uh, doing marketing, but then he was asked by Phil Unshams to start a company that we all know, because any of us who go into the movies or see the advertising before the film starts, that's Cliff's brainchild, he's run that company for twenty years, and so, we're here to express a great idea that has multiple facets, and I'm proud to introduce Cliff Marks to walk everyone through it.
Hi, everybody, thanks Lovelace, thanks Rudy, and, uh, thanks for the wonderful, great town, I've gone to be here before, and, uh, I did enjoy the hot springs last night, and, um, I went back, that was pretty, pretty amazing, so, I remember growing up as a kid, I grew up in Montreal, Canada, and I still remember in the seventies, sitting around with my family, around the television, watching Truth or Consequences, I think it was somebody from Yolli's Island, or something like that, if you're my age, remember, um, and I remember seeing my family yelling laughing, I mean, the show was really, really good, and it was a, a part of all of our lives, because the silly antics was so, was so neat back then, and who could forget Bob Barker's signature style? You should have come down, I'm like, right, there we go, hey, you want, you want to go? Right? Who could forget that smile, right? You got to open all your consequences to happen with. You know, here it is, fifty-some years later, we all still remember that. And if you think about it, the DNA of so many of today's game shows actually stem back to your relationship with the consequences. You know, you can trace back all these shows, Ellen's Game of Games, Let's Pick a Deal, Hair Fact, The Amazing Race, The Great Escape, Devil Bear, Price is Right, all stunt games, stunt game shows that put people in kind of awkward positions. And they were all just funny to watch because no one had ever seen people in such storage ridiculous before. So I want to share the ideas with you, our idea. I wanted to show you today, to fully get, what it's baked up, for everyone to see there's a really big opportunity here to bring Truth or Consequences back, create the game show circa 2021, what it would look like if Ralph Edwards created it today. And it was a new show, rather than the show we all knew from the sixties and seventies. And seventy-five years after it all began, we believe we created our film, which is tense. And if we can really take our ideas and execute it and work with the state and the town as a partner, I think we can do something really good, especially if you're ready for what's going on here in the region. Because I think when you put it together, it'll create something very, very powerful in the town. Take a look at these numbers.
Hello there. We've been waiting for you. It's time to play Truth or Consequences.
Yeah. You actually had to, you know, I watched that video a dozen times, basically a lot of it. It's also kind of fun, kind of dated, you know, based on the color versus the black and white. And you realize that was really the beginning of great family of entertainment. And there's a real, there's a real opportunity. So what I want to share with you this morning is how we are going to refer this great American institution. I come from the entertainment industry. My background is both movies and sports. As well as I said, I spent some time at ESPN. I've also been in the movie industry. And I realized, you don't need to be an actor in the movies to watch movies. You don't need to be an actor to love sports. Well, I believe we can create a great television show. That would be incredible for the town of all Truth or Consequences to put the studio here and produce. God, this is somewhere. I'd much rather produce than Truth or Consequences than, I don't know, a hundred other places I can think of. We believe that the opportunity is here. And it'll be such a great tribute to the show, to Ralph Edwards, not for Ralph Mucity, but, you know, not for Mucity or Ralph Edwards. I don't know, they ain't the same guy. I've actually never seen him in the same place as Sir Ralph. So who knows? But you can give him a great tribute because the show will bring back the great memories and the history past. But also, I can be a great tourism piece in the city, the state, and combining it with our, with the other idea we have, an entertaining zone that'll keep it passionate. We think it could be very, very special. So we put some thought into what the show might look like. We put some thought into some of the antics. You can see up on the screen, some ideas that we're playing with. And we think that with the right hosts, and we fan about a few hosts that we think could be a lot of fun, anyone from Shaquille O'Neal, who says we're the entertainment industry, the practical joke room. There are lots and lots of games that we can make the show fun. Once we hire our production partner, we'll get that all done. But what we want to do is, we might film it here locally. We want the show to be done bi-locals, four locals, ten locals. We think that'll make it very special. We think we'll create commerce. We think we'll create jobs. And the rest of the country would actually be able to enjoy the show through the lenses of Truth or Consequences. I don't know if we actually will show. I mean, you know, we even want, you know, what is the new version of that selling this we just watched, you know, from the seventies and eighties, sixties and seventies? Why does that feel like we're integrated with a modern twist? We think it should have a TikTok version. We think there should be a social media version. We think that we would make this show feel very much like a show that we watched as opposed to what a show felt like in the seventies and eighties. And if we do this right, we bridge the gap between all the new. We bridge the gap between all the new. The older generations will be very nostalgic to watch the show. We'll bring back a lot of memories. But the newer generations will have a whole new experience of Truth or Consequences that our kids can experience. And you have a show that's also generational, that literally maybe their grandparents watched in the sixties and seventies, and carries twenty-seven years on, is watching in the 2020s. And we think that's a very special thing. And we know that people love the element of dare. They love the element of surprise. They love the element of risk and fun. And that's what our goal would be when we were in the show. And you know, when you march to a live show, you never know, you know, are you going to be part of the show? Are you going to be a part of the joke on the show? And I think that would continue to be the special thing about the show, is you're going to be there live. You don't know if you're going to be in the show, and you don't know that people are going to be laughing at you or more than with you. So we've figured out all the details yet. We don't know who the host is going to be. We don't know, you know, where the studio would be. We don't know exactly what format would be, or what timeframe is. But we do know that the show needs to be ready. Let me tell you, let me tell you a little bit about why we think what our people do. As Ralph told you, his family owns Name That Tune. Hopefully, you've seen shows, certainly like Fox and Time Time. And Name That Tune has a great history as well. And you show, I want to show you. Name That Tune, fifty years ago, and Name That Tune today.
I can Name That Tune in five, four, three, two, one. No.
When we name that tune, maybe we'll bring it back.
These contestants go head to head, trying to maintain speed played alive by Randy and the band. The show where the more songs you know, the more passion can win. Come here, come here.
They're going to love the updated games.
First up, it's Spin Me Round. Let's play title track.
We make music, you make money.
Everything's possible with this show. That's what's so great about it.
Live music and a live audience. And me as host, who doesn't want to have that way of it?
Showed you very well outside of Fox last year. And you saw, there's evolution. The evolution of how it took the show over fifty years and what it feels like today, and what our vision would be with Truth or Consequences. So there's been a lot of shows, you know, you think about it, and I'm sure everybody here watches television. You think about it, there are a lot of shows like Name That Tune. It starred in nineteen fifty-two, back on TV now. That was a good show. Anybody watching that? I don't know if it's favorite. He's had a great job in running back the trauma he's had. Right, it's good, right? That's games back on, now Alan Fulmer. But these are all the shows that are open. The dating games are back on. Very, very, very good. You thought you were on the tip?
I am. These are my late-night shows.
Yeah. Supermarket Street, back on the air. Remember that show from the sixties, seventies? Honey, I'm not a kid, back on the air. I'm setting a trade. If you take all the shows, turn into great new shows, make them really good. Card Sharks, back on the air. That's your watch. All these shows, all returns. That's Rudy, the grand daddy of them all. Started nineteen forty-one on radio, by the way. So I also want to share something with you that we call, right now, the one thing that is the game show series. The idea would be, not only would we create a production studio, which is a great show, but we want to create what we call the game show series. It would be kind of a, think of it as universal studios for game shows. So not only are we going to have a studio here, but how about we have kind of a shrine, a hall of fame to game show, that you can actually go through it as a tourist and experience. You know, so maybe the family is going to go into the Truth or Consequences room and have a little experience, or an obstacle course. Or maybe you're going to go into the Jeopardy room, and you're going to have an experience of virtual reality, of course, because it's going to feel cool. And you can be on the show and have a good time. Or maybe you're going to go into the Price is Right, or you're going to be called down to the Price is Right. So we have this idea that, a deal to create this experience, this kind of game show hall of fame meets Disney World meets universal, here in Truth or Consequences. So after you've watched the live show, you're in the entertainment field with our game show series. So you just imagine, just imagine what this could be, if you really put our minds together to build something and give people a reason to come here and study game, not only to watch the live game of the show. How about we had our Truth or Consequences board game? Guys, recognize any of those locations, the board game? So how about there was a board game, and there was an app?
Very smart. I have that.
And there was an app. And there was a TikTok purchase. And how about on TikTok, every day you go in and send in today's daily consequence? Because we all feel something on our cellphones every day, catching someone doing something stupid. Because we do, because people do. So that now, that consequence lives on TikTok. So we think there's a lot of ideas here. And frankly, we haven't figured out, you know, we have figured out, it's a good idea. And we did the movie theater, my movie theater, we always started with a, with a, I don't know who's, please remember, Charles. So, so that's, that's really the essence of what we've done here. We need partners. We need state funding. We need subsidy funding. We need help pulling this off. We're going to do this project. We think it should be going to Truth or Consequences. We're hoping we have your support. We know we have other support around the state. We think we can do something really, really cool for the city. And I can't think of a better place than Truth or Consequences, to mention, for us to do this and then show that away. So that's all we've got. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you all for your presentations. Great presentation. Was there any questions from the commission?
I think this is.
Yes. You had me at hello, really, on this whole thing. Maybe the others, too. I remember watching the show way back under Ralph Edwards, and you never could get, I think one man answered the question. It was all shocked, and gave him another question. But anyway, what, what would this cost us? What do we have to do to get this, land this great showcase thing?
So here's what I'm going to tell you. Today, I'm here to ask you to dance the game. To ask you to be my date and dance. We're working on all that, and what this is going to cost. And we will be able to put that together as a business plan for the city. This will not be the cheap, low-cost fashion. What we want to do, and this is very, very important, very important, we want to build these studios here. These studios won't just be for a Truth or Consequences show. Most of these studios are here, if you build it, they will come. These will be studios that we will keep busy filming other shows in Name That Tune, which of course we own, but other shows that we want to bring here. And our vision is, I'm going to say, I can just add also, if we have to have a team to talk. Ralph, turn it off, brother. Turn it off. Cliff and I had the opportunity to talk to our governor a couple weeks ago and explain the idea to her. She immediately put us in touch with the Secretary of Economic Development, who we met with here in Truth or Consequences yesterday. She gave us some estimates. She gave us some ideas, and she told us exactly how the state could support this, especially if the city requests the support with us as partners. She laid out, you know, millions of dollars of support that they could do with the states and federal money that was available. They're still to talk to workforce solutions to new secretaries, so we can see where they're going to raise the table as well. But at the state level, they're just waiting on you guys to say, hey, state, we want to do this. And let's get into dialogue about how, you know, support these guys. Obviously, we understand we have to ask this at the end of the game also, and you're working on that as well. And in fact, the economic development secretary, Steve, told us that she already knew that we partners who really love to support something like this in this area. But I think it is fair to say, this does not work if it's just for Truth or Consequences to continue the show. What works is that we build a studio that is a living, reading studio. Even talking about forty thousand, if you just put it in perspective, two, twenty thousand, that's kind of what you'd think. And that works because we're fully true here. And we have the, and the entertainment is on, there's a audience around. That's a cool thing, getting a crowd around to see this kind of game show hall of fame. But it really comes down to building something to do more production, just like that was just there in downtown, to be more production, but our production decision would be here in truth. And, you know, equally, I think there's an opportunity to be friends with and married with V T, because we think there's something there, and this could be even a bigger sort of collaboration, a partnership. Yeah, for example, the part of the game show experience would be a zero gravity challenge. So imagine playing a game, you're trying to pour a cup of coffee while you're floating around. And do it in collaboration with Burton Galactic. One of the ideas that has been bounced around would be that the first grand prize of the new Truth or Consequences would be a live hall of fame for the Truth or Consequences, partly with Burton Galactic. So we also begun reaching out to them as well. One thing the governor did say, I thought, was nope, working with me, spoke to her, was that her focus right now, you know, the Mexico has got a well in the field, but the real money and the real opportunity is the television show, because you're around. And so that's her focus. And so that's why she's all for this, because she realizes that not only the truth, and maybe Name That Tune be produced here, but also several other game shows, because we've got studios that built for the game.
Thank you. Very exciting, you and all us.
Commissioner, um.
Can I ask something, please, real fast?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Ralph.
Yeah. Is that, I think it's a very fair question, obviously, which we, you know, we, you know, we're all business people. We anticipate what we have. you know, we, you know, we're all business people. We anticipate what we have. But once we get into it, I think we should also be able to show you the revenue that can be created as well for the city. So it's not just a, uh, you know, going all this money out, out, out. If we do this properly, we're hoping that we can drive a tremendous amount of people to this. Um, a call to the Universal Studios or whatever. Um, and there's some money to be made there as well. You know, in addition, you know, we have our eye on the international market. We have a relationship with the largest production company in the world. Vannacase, who helped you with Name That Tune. And they're already behind Truth or Consequences. So the idea would be like to shoot all the global shows out of, uh, things of, take, uh, of global shows in Truth or Consequences from, from, uh, all kinds of different locations. So, um, I think this, we should look at the revenue stream coming in as well.
You don't need to move anywhere beyond the current TV world. These channels, they all need shows, they all need content. Bring in other shows.
Thank you, Ralph.
She also pointed out, uh, Secretary Key that, uh, you know, her biggest headache right now is not enough stage space. They had to slow down how many productions they're bringing into the state because they don't have the capacity right now. So this would all, we feel very strongly, the soundstage is near to your seat. We welcome you.
Commissioner Forster, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm on board, too. I think this is, you know, um, such a grand idea. And like you said, it's not fully baked yet. There's lots of little, little things and lots of big things that we have to go, go and figure out. But, um, what, like Ralph was saying, this is more hits on bets for T R C and a huge economic, um, growth here. And I mean, if this happens, it's a good, really good.
Commissioner Luna, are you still on the line and do you have any comments? Commissioner Luna?
Madam, I just want to say that I'm a hundred percent on board. I think this is a neat thing to bring back. And I remember a couple of those shows, rest were before my time. I'm just kidding.
You're old enough to say.
I know. No, no, I know. I've seen, I'm just giving her time. Anyways, um, I hope this works out one way or another and I'm looking forward to it.
Manager Swingle, questions, comments, concerns, ideas, thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Commissioners. We've been in discussions for almost since the day I started with, with, with the city. Um, I don't think a lot of people that have lived here understand the significance of the game show through the consequences and how that was a part of building this community for decades in this community. Ralph called me, caught me on, I kept using the term T R C. And he said, you know, if I lived in T R C, or I'm talking about T R C, I would never use the term T R C. The, the name warrants its full definition. Truth or Consequences, and you call, telemarketers call, you call and order something online.
Oh, yeah.
Every time you do that, they will say, are you serious? Is this really, are you really for Truth or Consequences? You just made that up, didn't you?
Yeah, I know. I have it all the time.
It, it does.
It, it's a weekly occurrence at, at my house. Um, they were giving, you know, kind of throwing scenarios out. Uh, the public, they're just tourists traveling on the interstate. And they will recognize Truth or Consequences. Hey, I may be on the show. If I can get into the studio today, I may be on the show. Be in the audience and maybe I'm going to get selected. What is that going to do to the draw into this community? Whether they get on the show or not, I mean, that's irrelevant. They're coming in, they're getting gas, they're going to stores, they're visiting our community.
Yeah, well, even like they said, if there's other things they can do in that studio beside.
That's right.
Listen, my idea was, we're a movie theater. And you could actually have a movie theater screen. And why not, you know, Monday to Thursday afternoons, it doubles as a movie theater. I mean, you know, once we're building this, it could be a, a community center that can be more than just a studio for television shows. And that's kind of the community's collaboration. By the way, we would love, we want to have this initial dialogue to begin the conversation. But obviously, we feel like it's going to take a lot of community feedback and input for us to perfect this idea. We want it to be customized by the voices of the people of Truth or Consequences. That's also extremely important.
And that's what we need. We need to, to involve the community and get their thoughts and ideas. Um, I remember back many years ago when our Fiesta was really running fast and furious. You know, this was a big part of our, our Fiesta was the Bob Barker and the game shows and Ralph Edwards and This Is Your Life. And I mean, you know, we had people that would come in and I, I mean, we have these game shows. We have this participation and we would fill our, our gymnasium, our auditorium with people. I mean, so it, it can happen and, uh, it would be nice for it to happen now.
It would be more than just this game.
Yes.
People from other towns. You know, the university, the hell away. It could be an enormous part of this because we're going to, we're going to need people, people who understand film and production. We think that this studio could be a part of the national state film program and that we can create jobs and, and collaborate with the university. So I think we just touched on the ideas. And probably we talked to your professor last night. She's very high on that idea of working with the university because this would be very meaningful.
Mark, if everything worked out, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had cut Swingle off when he was talking to you. Were you done?
So, you know, uh, you mentioned Ralph Edwards. You know, we, uh, I just wanted to note to the guys who didn't mind reading the letter. We got, you know, the letter Bruce that I sent over to you. We're very proud of that, that Ralph's family, um, opted to sell the brand to us. Um, a lot of people wanted it over the years. And, um, so we, we hold it, we hold it in the highest regard that what we have to do has to be very consistent with the, the imagery and the, um, morals and whatever else you want to use that Ralph Edwards, um, was known for. Um, although it's kind of funny that we both share the first name. But, uh, that wasn't done on purpose.
Thank you, Ralph. Commissioner Ergon?
Yeah, Mark, barring, I don't know, perceived circumstances, when could this thing come to fruition? The first show? I'm just, you know, well, yes.
Well, and I throw my crystal ball.
Yes, you need to throw it out.
I think the first show could come to fruition sooner than the actual studio here. You know, so we may make a deal with a television network or production company that they produce, the first, the first show is going to be on in twenty twenty-two. I don't know about studio built here and everything will be built here for the first shows. But, you know, you're probably looking at, I'm guessing, I asked my colleagues, probably twelve months to bring this to real fruition, plus eighteen months.
Madam, ma'am?
We'll be meeting, following up with the state, obviously, this week. And that, what we do will depend on how quickly they can get the paperwork to be, for a needed grant and all that other kind of stuff that the secretary which is just a ready to pull the trigger on for us. So if we, if that process goes quickly, then, you know, that will drive kind of how quickly we can bring this to fruition.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I think our time is kind of running out. Uh, Commissioner, I mean, uh, Manager Swingle, did you have any more comments or questions or?
Well, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Potem, Commissioners. Uh, there'll be a lot of follow-up, um, with these gentlemen over the next weeks and months to, to move forward. You know, we're familiar with the legal process. Uh, they are as well. And, uh, you know, we'll work with them at every opportunity we can to help this come to fruition.
And that's a wonderful venture for, for Truth or Consequences. And thank you, gentlemen. And we will stay in touch, Commissioner.
Sorry, um, I do know a few people that would probably be interested in one way helping out or something. Do you guys have any cards or anything for them to get ahold of you or something?
We will, we will, if you want to.
Thank you.
I have one more question, too. Rudy, where are you from?
Too bad it's not Truth or Consequences.
Well, thank you, guys. Your presence is welcome. And thank you, Ralph. Thank you for being on the line and good luck. Again, we'll, we'll be in touch. All right. Nice to meet you guys. Thanks, guys. Nice to meet you. Good to see you. Take care. That's what I'm saying to you. Our next item on the agenda this morning is item E, the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of E one, City Commission, regular minutes of July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. E two, acknowledged planning and zoning, regular minutes of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And E three, accounts payable for July twenty twenty-one. Commissioner Forster, make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forster and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of the consent calendar as noted. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph? Honorable Madam Forster? Aye. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead? Aye. Honorable Randall Ergon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Lemon? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F, ordinance with resolutions and zoning. F one, discussion, action, resolution number fourteen twenty-one slash twenty-two, budget adjustment request. Um, I have Carol ProPatrick listed on here as a finance director, but I hear that Tracy is going to give her a report.
Mayor, Mayor Potem, Commissioners, this is just to reconcile some budget adjustment requests. You'll see on the spreadsheet, there was a correction made for the Clean and Beautiful Grant in a small amount. Uh, there was a donation to the police department, needs to be reflected in the budget. And then the, uh, Federal Aviation Administration and state grants that were approved at previous meetings, uh, reconciled into the budget. Staff request that you approve resolution fourteen twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments from the commission? No, ma'am. Manager Swingle?
No. Commissioner Forster, make the motion to approve resolution number fourteen twenty-one twenty-two.
Commissioner Baca will second it.
I have a motion, uh, motion made by Commissioner Forster and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of resolution number fourteen twenty-one slash twenty-two, budget adjustment request as noted by Tracy Alvarez, our, um, Assistant City Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph? Honorable Sandra Whitehead? Aye. Honorable Randall Ergon?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forster? Aye. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Lemon? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F three, discussion, action, publication of ordinance number seven nineteen relating to administrative, administration adopting a personnel policy, setting forth personnel rules and regulations, and establishing consent, basic policies, practices, and professional, uh, expectations concerning relations between the City of Truth or Consequences and its employees. Manager Swingle?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Commissioners. The request is to allow us to post the ordinance, publicize it, publish it for the, uh, the public to, uh, review. Uh, our current personnel policy is about eleven years old, uh, and then some. Uh, it's certainly outdated. There are a number of conflicts with case law and statutes that need to be corrected. So, uh, this isn't a revision of the existing ordinance. This is a completely new personnel policy, uh, for the organization. Um, there are some changes on the accrual of leave. The current policy has, you know, it's a very, very gracious on the commission's behalf to afford the employees the amount of leave that they generate annually in particular. However, it's really difficult for us to sustain that, uh, in the long term. So what's recommended in the policy is there's a change. Everybody that is currently an employee and employed with the city prior to the adoption of this, uh, or this ordinance, it would remain accumulating the leave as they currently do. It would be effective for those people that are hired after the adoption, where it would change, it would reduce it. It's still a very good leave package, but the one we're getting, we provide now, uh, is more than generous. And we have to back that up a little bit. We do not ever want to take benefits from employees. I would never want to address, you know, the, the existing employees and try and reduce their leave. However, moving forward, we do have to, we are recommending the change. Uh, there are a lot of professional and ethic standards that are incorporated into the personnel policy. Um, bottom line is most disciplinary issues that we deal with, uh, on a daily basis, including up to termination. They're generally not performance-based issues. It's generally professionalism and behavior issues. And we're clarifying what the expectations are. Those expectations are not any more than what any employer would expect of their employees. We just reduce that to writing, putting those, uh, those standards in the personnel policy. Uh, that in a nutshell, the significant changes, um, we, we will be working with, you know, with Jay and counsel in, uh, fine tuning this, this ordinance, um, over the next thirty days before we bring it to the commission for, for vote. So staff's recommendation that you would, uh, allow us to post this ordinance.
Thank you.
And I'll walk one, actually. I mean, I agree with, um, Mr. Swingle's comments. Um, I did go through and I did make some suggested changes. But I don't think we need to go through that now. I think we can actually just go to publication on this. I would anticipate when you go to publication, you're not going to actually publish the whole packet here. You know, it's a very luminous, uh, document talking about, uh, the ordinance. Um, but, uh, I would anticipate that the publication was to advise the public, anybody wants to inspect a copy of this, they could go down to the, to the clerk's office and, and have it. So by then, we will have the actual proposed revised ordinance on it. I mean, with this, with tomorrow's matter of fact, we're going to go over to a few things. So we should be able to see it. So I think we can, I, I think we can go to, uh, publication today.
Thank you, Attorney Robin. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Ergon?
Bruce, I read the, uh, the personnel policy. I had a pack of lunch. Very well put together. Very comprehensive. You touched on almost everything I think we needed. And this has been talked about for several years and it's finally come to fruition. So I applaud you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baca, make a motion on the publication ordinance number seven nineteen?
Commissioner Forster, a second. I have a, a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forster to go to publication of ordinance number seven nineteen relating to the advertisement, adopting a personnel policy and forthcoming personnel rules and regulations as noted here by our manager, Bruce Swingle. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph? Honorable Sandra Whitehead? Aye. Honorable Randall Ergon?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forster? Aye. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Lemon? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item G, uh, new business, G one, discussion, action, approval of, uh, pool rent, whole rental contract, whole rental contract between the City of Truth or Consequences and Sacred Wind Communications, E, vote. Good morning.
Good morning. This morning I did receive, uh, a new contract for broadband cable with, uh, Sacred Wind and the city here, if you all need asking questions. So this will be, uh, a new contract with the city, used like our Windstream, TDS contract. Where, uh, broadband will be attaching to some phones and we will be giving the rental fee for, for whole attachments. Me and Jay have gone through this contract. Uh, the city has, which is North York, TDS, and same contract.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, when I, I'm sorry, I was going to just mention this.
Go ahead, attorney.
Yeah, when I, uh, when, uh, Mr. Easy and I discussed this, in fact, I had the Windstream contract in front of me when I was going through this to make sure they were complimentary, so.
Commissioner Forster?
Um, it's, with that being said, is the, um, attachment fees and violation fees everything very similar to the Windstream and TDS?
We're in it. So I said that again.
The whole attachment rental fees. And I'm, is that?
No, the, the Windstream and TDS attachment fees, they go up. They used to be five dollars. They're going up every year. If you're selling something, you gotta allow it to ten dollars.
Okay, and these were starting at twelve?
Cool, yeah. And that's, and that stays constant. Yeah. But we're already, you know, it's, in fact, twelve dollars is the word paper, I guess.
And what's the term on this contract? Is there a, is it forever?
It's ten years, I'm thinking. What is it?
It just says it's from the effective date unless terminated by either party. So it's basically.
How many poles do we have? And what is going to bring it yearly? This comes in, well, approximately, how much is that revenue stream? Oh, you got to figure it out. I don't think you know it. Whatever that math is on that, it's quite bad. Bruce, that might help you. Right?
Thirty-six, yeah. Approximately thirty-two, thirty, thirty-some thousand.
Per year? Oh, that's a little bit less than we, good, I like that. Okay. Thank you.
Just throw that out there. Commissioner Forrester, make the motion to approve the contract of the pole.
Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Aragon to approve the pole rental contract between the City of Truth or Consequences and Sacred Wind Communications, Inc., as presented and noted by Bo Easy, our Electric Department Director, and comments made by our attorney, Jay Rubin. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnett?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is G2 Discussion Action Approval of MOU between Children, Youth, and Families Departments, CYFD, and the City of Truth or Consequences, Police Department Chief Rodriguez.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Commissioner Swingle, this is a pretty simple MOU between the CYFD Department and the Police Department. As you recall, Mexico has had some very tragic child abuse cases where law enforcement and CYFD are not familiar with, and this particular period was called a law enforcement program, and law enforcement has been very, 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 very concerned with CYFD. And this is a MOU between the Police Department and CYFD users that hold the, hold, that everybody knows, they're the third of the department.
Hold on.
Nice. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions, comments? Manager Swingle?
Commissioner Baca, make a motion to approval of the MOU.
Commissioner Forrester, a second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester to approve the MOU between the CYFD and the City of Truth or Consequences as presented by Chief Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph.
Thank you. Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnett?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. The next item is G4 Discussion Action Approval, approved recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a Level 3 Home Occupation Permit for, oh, I missed one. Sorry, sorry. G3, excuse me. Discussion Action Approval of Purchase Requisition Over $20,000. It's State Carol, but I know Tracy will give the report.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, all items have been budgeted for, two of them, Armstrong Consultant, Maxwell Asphalt. You guys, all, the commission approved the FAA state grants for that at the last meeting, then B&amp;H Oil and the HVAC for both of those respective departments. Everything was in their respective budgets. Request approval.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Are there any questions and comments from the commission? Manager Swingle?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, again, this is one you're going to see more often, just making sure that there's expenditures over $20,000, those contracts and agreements are presented to the commission for, one, for your knowledge and approval, but it also is a mechanism to keep the public educated on the, more of the day-to-day activities of the, of the city.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Forrester, make the motion to approve the purchase requisition.
Commissioner Baca, second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of purchase requisitions over $20,000 as noted by Tracy Alvarez, our Assistant City Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnett?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is G4 Discussion Action Approved, Recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission to Approve a Level 3 Home Occupation Permit for a Small Auto Repair Shop at 1407 Mercury. Tracy Alvarez.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, PMZ Commission met on August 2nd, and they have a recommendation to approve a home occupation level 3 permit at 1407 Mercury. This would be a small auto repair shop. We did not have any opponents at the meeting. We did have two proponents, and staff request approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
And I'll give a little bit more information on that also.
Attorney Rubin?
Yeah, what we're talking about under our code is Section 11-5-4 Home Occupation Permit. I was reading the first sentence, this is what we're talking about here. A home occupation permit enables a homeowner to pursue specified business or commercial activities that are considered compatible with residential areas within proper property district built for residential use. And this what we have here, is an application made for this proposed business on residential property. And 11-5-4 does prescribe certain factors that the commission is to consider. I would guess they're probably maybe the most important one, if nothing, to put one factor ahead of anything else, is whether there's any objection from any of their landowners, the neighboring landowners. Determination is made, this will not affect adversely adjoining properties, impair property values, or endanger public safety. And I'm glad to see that there was a public hearing, it was conducted, the planning and zoning level, and as Ms. Alvarez pointed out, the notice was given to all the neighboring landowners, and no one's objected to it. And I see there's nobody here apparently who wants to speak on this issue here today, so, yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that we did have, as Assistant City Manager Alvarez pointed out, we did have a few of the adjacent property owners there, and they were very much well thinking that.
So that's even better. Not only was there no opposition, but the neighbors are in favor of this, so I think that's, that's really important to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Manager Swingle?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Baca, make the motion on item D4, as noted.
And Commissioner Forrester, a second, with a comment of, I'm glad that the neighbors were in agreement, because I think it's always good, I think we need to really try to put these small businesses and try to make them work. So I'm glad that their neighbors were in agreement.
I agree.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester to approve recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a Level 3 Home Occupation Permit for a Small Auto Repair Shop at 1407 Mercury, and she also commented it was nice to know that the neighbors were in compliance and not in compliance, that were in favor of this business going in place. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph.
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnett?
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is G5 Discussion Action Approval of City of Truth or Consequences Organizational Chart. Manager Swingle?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. This revision is due for a couple reasons. One, we reorganized the organization, creating an Assistant City Manager as well as identifying what those departments that she will directly oversee, as well as our org chart was very old and wasn't consistent with what the organization looked like. I did give you a amended version today that included the courts, that, you know, that relationship and the reflection in the org chart is always iffy, just because of the dynamics of what the courts do and what the city does, and there's really not a lot of intermingling between, particularly on leadership and management. So they're put in, they're put in, kind of like the fire department, it's kind of a DAS line, there's a connection there, and, you know, we're basically supporting it everywhere we can. So it starts with, you know, the organizational chart, the top of the chart is the public, your constituents, then the commission, and then it goes down into the pyramid of the org chart. So it's staff's recommendation, hope that you will approve the new org chart for the organization.
Very nice. I thank you for that. Thank the staff for putting this together.
Thank you. It looks good, and like I said, it needed to be done, and just a good visual for people to look at, too.
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission?
Commissioner Forrester, make the motion to approve the City of Truth or Cial Organizational Chart.
Commissioner Aragon, second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forrester and seconded by Commissioner Aragon for the approval of the City Truth or Consequences Organizational Chart as presented and noted by City Manager Swingle. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph.
Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnett?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is G6 Discussion Action Approval of Amendment to the Housing and Care of Adult Prisoners Joint Powers Agreement, JPA, between the County of Sierra and the City of Truth or Consequences. Manager Swingle?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Sierra County recently experienced a increase from Luna County on that cost per prisoner, $15 per inmate per day. So their cost has gone from $65 to $80. Socorro's always been a much higher rate, and this county actually was absorbing that loss of revenue from us. So this is an opportunity to get us in line, so the overall cost, this is what they pay per bed with Luna County and Socorro County. Then they also have their cost of running the transportation unit as well, which is about $30 per prisoner per day. So putting it all together, we're going to go from $95 a day to $110 a day per prisoner. And that is, there's no profit built in for Sierra County. This is their cost of what's costing them to house and transport these inmates.
Thank you. Commissioner Aragon?
Bruce, we make an arrest, it costs $110 per day. The inmate or prisoner gets sent to Luna County, like I know, one of us with DWI, I got the van there, it's been three months, we're paying $110 every day, even though he's in Luna County, correct?
We're only responsible for the inmates that meet the city.
Right. The city case.
City cases, city criteria.
Right.
And typically, it's a three-day max that we pay for. Anything beyond that is absorbed by the county. It's consistent with the statute, what the city's responsible, financial responsibility is on prisoners, and what the county's responsibility is. You know, when I was county manager, I hated it, because the city was getting away with murder.
Right.
They're paying very little. You know, the county's paying $2.5 million for housed inmates, and, you know, our budget's somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000 a year. So it's just the statutes, it's the law right now.
Okay.
And I don't see that the legislature would ever change that. So it's a good deal for local municipalities, and the county has worked with us very well. They're just asking us to pay what they're having to pay in addition.
All right. Thank you.
There's nothing wrong with that.
No? No.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Baca, make the motion of G6 as noted.
Commissioner Forrester, a second. I have a motion made by, excuse me, I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester to, for the approval of the amendment of the Housing and Care of Adult Prisoners Joint Powers Agreement, JPA, between the County of Sierra and the City of Truth or Consequences as noted and presented by Manager Swingle. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ralph.
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Linnett? Francis? Honorable Randall Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item G7 Discussion Action Review Approved and Allocate FYI Physical Year 2021 through 2022 Audress Tax Funding for Chamber of Commerce Veterans Memorial Wall and Museum and Main Street Tier C. Tammy Gardner?
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. What we have here, G7, is rolling to ABC. It's G7A is the approval for the Chamber of Commerce. There are two applications in this packet. One of them was a previous application that they had submitted, and it was tables that they got it straightened out, so in the packet you'll see two different service agreements. The difference between them is dates. I don't believe there's any right cost differences, but it's a longer contract to distribute between the resident guide to El Paso and Alprica. We also, if you have any questions, we do have that here, but it is for a full cost of $3,059. I don't know how you want to do this, but if you want to, definitely, if you want to work. If you don't have any changes, you can go ahead and do them all together. Is, is that recommendable?
I'm fine with that. That's fine.
Okay. Moving on to application number two of the show. It is the Visit Tier C Project. It's for large digital ads and text campaign that drives over right visitors from a class of truth or see. Truth or Consequences.
I know. I said Tier C earlier, too. Truth or Consequences.
They are working with, just to make sure I have the right name, Sparkers Design and Marketing, helping workers. And mind you, I didn't say this in the beginning, these are all recommended for approval by the Department of Commerce, Department of Education, Department of Labor, and all of this, and all of the three. They approved, I know on the Part IV Plan for that, and I'll request it, it says $4,480, but they had different approaches, they cost different pricing, and the pricing package that they approved was $35,040. And moving on to B.
So they're not asking for the $42,000?
No, they, well, they asked, they asked for it, but the larger tax advisor voted through the package.
At $35,000. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Item B is Main Street. Main Street is asking for branding logo. This is money in the branding logo, I don't know if you're familiar with the Main Street project. They're doing a rebranding of the city. They asked for $11,000, and the larger tax advisor approved the total amount of their application to include website, promotion, Facebook digital ads, and miscellaneous things like stickers and love, ads and stuff like that. Final one we have is G7C. It is to the veterans law. Again, they asked for a different amount of money. They asked for $4,582. This will probably come, this might come back for you. We had a bit of confusion at the advisory board meeting. They didn't approve the in brackets for the brochures, because it had been allocated last year, but they got confused, and it doesn't hold over. So they were approved of the amount last year, but they did not extend the amount last year, so they're going to have to bring it back before the larger tax, but they, I think they thought that it was over, but the contact was for last year, and it's expired, so it won't come back. But they did approve the amount for the LaGuardia billboard for the one year, only one year rental fee for the billboard and $3,475 for prisoners. That would be four applications they have this time, and staff are coming here.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy. Are there any questions from the commission? Manager Swingle, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. This, this, as I said, what they did not find this year, they funded last year, and there was some confusion as to, they didn't spend it. And there was some confusion as to they didn't spend it last year. And the contract was up to the end of the fiscal year. So we have to be mindful of that in the future. These contracts are what, you know, giving them a reasonable amount of time to expense the money. So I'm confident that they will bring it back for the, the amount of revenue that they asked for last year to get that, to order those things.
Yeah, I'm going to go hold Wendy and Abby. They're all, and then the next Lodge 13, we're just going to hold four today. We'll go ahead and clarify with them and let them know what happened. But mind you too, they've changed the way that they fund. So that was confusing. And if they're funding things, if they're requesting and funding things towards the end of the fiscal year, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to fall on them to give that extended and get all the proper documentation because we can only pay up through May, so February, maybe through May, May 31st because of the end of the fiscal year. So if they don't do all of them some at the beginning of the fiscal year anymore, they.
Pay it out.
Yeah, they approve them as the package comes in throughout the entire fiscal year. So that's where they're like, I don't know. Because they funded that.
Okay, but this will go back to the Lodge 13 and then it'll come back to us for final approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And these are all Lodge 13 funds, just making that known to people.
We need a motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Forster make the motion to approve and allocate Lodge 13's funding to the Chamber of Commerce, Veteran Memorial Law, Francis Alvarez, and Main Street Chief of Consequences.
Commissioner Baca, a second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forster and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of the allocated physical year 2021, 22 Lodge 13's funds as noted by Tammy Gardner, our administrative assistant, and also by Commissioner Forster. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll.
Honorable Paul Bocka.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna.
Of staying. Okay, we have four, two, one, one of staying. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is item G nine, discussion action approval, approval of airport rescue grant offer, grant number three dash thirty-five dash zero zero. Oh, I still missed one. Sorry about that. G eight, discussion action approval of Lodge 13's funding guidelines. Tammy Gardner.
These guidelines were amended by the board and they actually did all the changes. They submitted all the changes from the packet. I don't believe that we had a red light first, but we might have had a red light first.
In the packet, what I included was our previous one. That was adopted, I think in 2019, just so you can see what our previous Lodge 13's funding guidelines were. And then the new one that the Lodge 13's board did during a workshop. So they had a workshop to go over all of the changes and then in a meeting they made the recommendations that are presented.
Thank you.
The highlight of two of them is changing names of contacts. They're changing, previously they have to record the reports. They are taking away the order of the report from the turn to the sixth year, the monthly report because the project funding is different. They're making, they may be up to do projects to reserve. Of course, there are all the changes that were proposed and applications, which are brought into consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Manager Swingle.
Mayor, Mayor Protan Commissioners, thank you. Watching them go through the exercise, you can tell they're a lot of business people. They're very matter of fact, it's a very good board. And I thought they did a very good job in due diligence trying to improve the document. And staff absolutely, you know, supports adoption of the guidelines.
Nice, thank you.
Commissioner Baca make a motion, approval of the Lodge 13's funding guidelines.
Commissioner Forster, a second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forster for the approval of Lodge 13's tax funding guidelines as noted and presented by Tammy Gardner, our administrative or executive assistant. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Bocka.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna.
Commissioner Luna. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is G nine, discussion action approval of airport rescue grant offer, grant number three dash thirty-five dash zero zero forty-two dash zero twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one. Tracy Alvarez, our Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, Mayor Protan Commissioners. Once again, there was FAA money out there due to COVID. We submitted an application, we were approved for twenty-two thousand dollars. Funds are to be used for basic maintenance and operation at the airport so we can submit for payroll and utility bills and just receive twenty-two thousand dollars for budget operations. Request approval and signatures.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Are there any questions from the commission?
Was there any match or anything or no?
No, it's just twenty-two thousand dollars they give us.
Just in three minutes.
Three minutes.
Commissioner Forster will make the motion to approve G nine.
Commissioner Baca, a second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Forster and seconded by Commissioner Baca for the approval of airport rescue grant offer, grant number three dash thirty-five dash zero zero forty-two dash zero twenty-three dash two twenty twenty-one as presented by Tracy Alvarez. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Bocka.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Forster.
Aye.
Honorable Randall Aragon.
Aye.
Honorable Francis Luna.
Motion carries. The next item is G ten, discussion action decision to give City Manager authority to initiate necessary steps to develop the ordinance implementing a key T or C Truth or Consequences Clean and Beautiful Advisory Board. Commissioner Aragon.
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to find it now. This, this agenda item I'm prepared is kind of self-explanatory. I've been in cities where, that had such a board and let me tell you something. It turned out to be light years ahead of where it was before. When you have, and it's in here, when you have a citizenry board that comes up with ideas, it's much stronger, gives much more lift than an individual calling us and giving us, you know, what they want us to do or complaining or whatever, or modifications. So if a board was to tell me as a commissioner that they'd like to see this done and even if it had some monetary strings to it, it means a lot. It's a lot more powerful. We've got people, we've got citizens that are very interested in, I would love some of them to be on it. One person, his name, his initials is Rick Dumiac. I would love him to consider jumping aboard. He has good ideas and people such as that. We need, we need ideas and we keep, Bruce has been inundated, I know, every day with something. And I like to hear it from a board. I think it's going to be powerful. If it costs money, we'll consider it. But I think it will showcase our city. And Justin, I mean, Jaggar, you're another person, I'd love to see you on this. But anyway, there's a lot of people out there, a lot of citizens out there that have told me that they like the idea. We need to, it needs to come to fruition and hopefully you agree on that. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Aragon. Are there any questions from the commission?
My only question and concern would be, we have a hard time filling an advisory board as we speak.
I know.
Um, and so I know you're throwing out some names and it just so happens that those two people are in here. So is there, is there an interest to our community in that is my question?
It's an opportunity. I know people say a lot and, you know, you talk the talk, I like to walk the talk. This is an opportunity to jump aboard.
I like that you know this a lot.
And I would like to thank, just a second, Jaggar. I would like to thank both Rick Dumiac for all he does at keeping the trash and picking up the garbage and whatnot. I appreciate that. I know there's been times that he doesn't probably feel that we appreciate him, but we do. Jaggar, you know, you've always been a big part of our community and you do great things. But like Commissioner Forster did touch on, we've got many boards and we've got many valuable boards as well as this one would be a valuable board. But we don't have people that want to serve on them. We don't have people that want to really participate. You know, I, I know that our manager is probably inundated with calls and complaints and this and that and the other. But we also have that issue of bringing people to want to serve on our boards. You know, we've had the issue of, of no females on the boards. Well, you know, our clerk advertises continuously about boards and do we get anybody? No. You know, when we reappoint or reaffirm somebody on our board, it's because nobody else is, is coming in and applying. So again, you already do the work. So why do we need a board where nobody's going to, to come and help you? Do you know what I mean? I, I mean, that's just where, that's just where I'm going. Mr. Dumiac, let me let Jaggar real quick because he had his hand up.
I recommend reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and the business community. There's bound to be somebody, if there's a chamber member who might want to help. And it's like, I don't know, you may need two members. Probably reach out to them and there's bound to be somebody who may want to volunteer and be around the business.
Yeah, I'm not agreeing with you on that as well. I personally know at least we've got some foundation for these. She's a whole thing organizing, a national organization, we have the general team. She wants to issue a statement. I don't think we're involved with the board. The Main Street reviews have a committee gathered, which is the City Crew. I don't know if they still have that committee in place or not. But every once in a while they would coordinate with the City Crew to pick up trash.
Well, and we've tried to do that. I know before COVID hit, you know, we had started the campaign of, of having a free landfill day, free trash day. And I mean, there was many, many participants. I mean, I worked those days. I was out there, you know, guiding traffic and watching people come and go and, and just communicating with these people that really, really appreciated this. And of course with COVID, we had to, you know, to give it up. And hopefully one of these days we can, we can start that campaign again. But, um, you know, I was also thinking of getting just small committee, and this is just me talking, small committees together to go through and clean up. Maybe in the spring, maybe in the summer, maybe in the fall. You know, just to get a group together that we would go, like, like Mr. Dumiac does, to go and pick up the trash. You know, a few people from the chambers, a few people from the museum, a few people. And that way we wouldn't necessarily have to depend on a board to keep a full board of five members or whatever together. But kind of have a committee that would do that. But again, that's, that's me and that's where I'm thinking. We really don't need any more boards. But again, I'm only one. Mr. Dumiac?
Commander, I think a board, I actually think a lot of those are simply managers. Some of the people residents know because of board, that as a manager, in fact, something actually happened to them. Yeah, just right there with Ross, I turned around and he comes to me, back before I'm on board. I say, hey, I want to be that also. What do I get back to school? What do I get back? How do you do them send to you from here?
Manager.
So what we're hearing is that you're going to chair that board.
I'll be honest.
I think that's great.
Manager Swingle, I need your comments and concerns and thoughts and ideas. I mean, is this something you would like to see or?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protan Commissioners. The city looks the way it looks to a large extent because how the city's responded, you know, historically. We've, we've changed the personnel. We've changed the philosophy of what we're doing. And Jamie Swingy is our code enforcement officer, new code enforcement officer. She has got the full gamut of code enforcement responsibilities. The chief of police is very knowledgeable and informed of what we need the city to look like. And he's taking the steps to make sure that happens. I share the same concern on another board. That, and it sounds neat initially, but will it kind of fade away very quickly? Which like the other boards have, you don't get participation. I'm not a host to a board, but I do believe that the code enforcement is being very responsive to those issues now. That everybody had so many hats to wear, you know, historically. This individual that is there on the job is code enforcement of the city. She wanted to keep safety and keep that as a responsibility? No. Code enforcement is in such a condition in this community and the life of this community, it has to be rectified. You don't clean the city up overnight. It didn't happen overnight. It's going to take time. You can't say this, this residents look so bad. There's so many issues here we have to deal with. It's got to be done in thirty days. They've got to make progress. They've got to make, and it's got to be appreciable progress. It can't be, well, I've got forty cars in the yard and I removed one this month. That's not appreciable progress.
Right.
But it, it's, that is the focus of code enforcement now. So it's very different than what it was. And you all are going to receive probably more calls on it than I am of residents complaining that, you know, living unreasonable. But there's a spirit and intent behind the code regulations and we want to follow that, that spirit and intent. An example would be just something as weeds. And we've historically gone out and written everybody up for weeds. Well, having weeds is not necessarily the spirit and intent of that regulation. It's where it becomes a problem. And it is a problematic issue. And that, that is, is the focus of code enforcement today. I think I said this at our last meeting, one individual's trash is another person's treasure. We have to take that into consideration. However, we cannot affect public health, public safety, and we can't appreciate the values of the properties around us. That, the spirit of our work should be focused on that. And not necessarily there's X number of cans in the yard or something. And I do believe that we will get the city cleaned up. It is going to take time though.
Thank you. Commissioner Aragon, I just want to thank you for bringing this to, to the commission. I think at this time, what I'm understanding and hearing from Manager Swingle is that with our new code enforcement officer, that we're hoping to, to be able to do the cleanup that should be done in a proper timely manner and fashion. But again, I don't want to just throw this out, you know, with the bathwater or throw the baby out with the bathwater. So let's just kind of revisit this later on if we need some, if we need to do that.
Well, it would like a committee of, maybe forming a committee or a group of people that would like to initiate the Tier, the Clean and Beautiful State Project that's going on. So maybe not a board.
As a board, but maybe a committee. But this would be something we can look at and revisit. Let's, let's give Jamie the time. I mean, she's only been on this position for just a couple of weeks. And I understand that she hit the ground running and is doing a fabulous job. In fact, I think she's even tagged us a few times. And so, um, you know, let's give her the opportunity to show us what she can do and come forward. But again, we still want to be mindful and pick up that trash. You know, again, I drive down the road and if I see something in the middle of the road, lo and behold, guess who stops and moves it out of the way? Sometimes it goes in the back of my car or in the back of my truck and do the trash. I mean, I've even picked up tires and poked my, you know, poked my fingers because it's got to come out of the road. So thank you all and I appreciate your help and, and thoughts on this. So do. So this will, no action on this one.
The next item on our agenda is G eleven, discussion, action, reappointment of Teresa King to the Lodge 13 Advisory Board, Angela Torres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protan Commissioners. Teresa King is a current member on the board. Her term expired in June of 2021. The Lodge 13 Advisory Board voted to reappoint her on July 26th. Her term will be a four-year term. In our city code, the Lodge 13 Advisory Board. On in our city code, the Lodger Stat Advisory Board, they have four-year terms instead of two-year terms. And we currently do have an additional vacancy that we've had on there for, I would say, over a year that we've been advertising. So if anybody's interested in serving on the Lodger Stat Board, please come to the clerk's office and put in your application. Um, I recommend approval. Thanks for reappointment.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Commissioner, Commissioner Baca, make a motion. On, 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 she's, yes, on the reappointment of Teresa King. Sorry.
Commissioner Forrester, also again. I have a motion made by Commissioner Baca and seconded by Commissioner Forrester for the reappointment of Teresa King to the Lodger Stat Advisory Board for a four-year term, as noted by Angela Torres, our clerk. Madam clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Madam Forrester?
Aye.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable Rondo Aragon?
Aye.
Honorable Francis Kuna?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is item H, reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protown, Commissioners. A couple of things. One, some kudos. First, I'd like to thank the electric department and the water department. Through recent electrical storms we had August 3rd and August 4th, uh, we had a number of lightning strikes that took out electricity in various areas of the city, as well as some areas that impacted our pumping stations. Electric department went out and, and resolved these. I think the longest outage we had was 30 minutes. They got on it really quickly. I think the quickest one was somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or nine minutes, got it restored, services restored. The, uh, water department had to go out and, you know, ensure that the pumps were operating properly was, you know, once the electricity was back and up and running. So kudos to the electric department, the water department for, uh, for their efforts. You know, we just, we know when the power go down. We don't appreciate them every day to keep the, the grid, uh, operating in place. Tremendous electric department. We have a tremendous water department and, uh, kudos to, to both departments. I have a, an email from Tracy, kind of kudos to, uh, to Carol in finance. We had some unexpected fuel issues at the airport and Carol, on her time off, actually took the time to get involved and address the issues to get the, the procurement and everything done extremely quick. So kudos to Carol for that. And, you know, Carol had a number of items on the agenda today to present. Carol is a finance person and she is top-notch. I think you probably gathered that for our workshop this week. But she, she knows she's short one person right now and she has another one on vacation. So they're, they're working double time and she needed to be there in the office and doing finance stuff instead of presenting to the commission. So, um, hope you understand that, her excuse is a genuine one. Uh, we had the workshop this week, Monday, you know, addressing, discussing the budget, revenues and finances of the, of the city, and it went very well. We had the commissioners there till noonish, 12:30, uh, about discussing, you know, ideas and, and concerns. And I think staff figured from after lunch, they were here till 5 o'clock, kicking around ideas and we'll be submitting stuff, particularly the low hanging fruit, to the commission in the very near future and then, uh, kind of a, a plan on, on a much bigger scale. That's going to take us a little more time to, to get it all together and bring you all the facts so that you can make an informed decision on, on, on growing revenues in this community and reducing expenses. We're not going to get out of this if we try to grow only revenues. We also have to reduce expenses as well. It's going to be a combination of all to, to make this work for the city and, uh, make it successful for our residents. I'm very appreciative. The staff really enjoyed having the time with the commissioners. It's something we're going to have to do more often, where this, the directors come in and have an opportunity to interact with the commission. I, I think you enjoyed it as well?
I did enjoy it.
You've got a lot of brain power there and they just did a tremendous job. And I expect very good recommendations from all of them. That afternoon, we spent the time pretty much dedicating and delegating the responsibility who's going to do what, what they should do, put that together, then present it, you know, in the near future. Uh, we've had a number of GIS, you know, rule addressing or addressing issues, and TRC. We haven't had anyone in that capacity for some time. And, uh, our addressing is, is problematic. So with the change at the county and Keith Whiting has actually taken over GIS and rule addressing responsibilities for the, the county, Tracy and I will have a meeting with him this week to talk about how we can get that service built. He's developed some kind of agreement between the two entities to have him provide that service for us and get us caught up. It doesn't make sense for us with the limited addressing that we do. It doesn't make sense for us to have a full-time GIS addressing in this community. It doesn't make sense that El Capitan Way is where each has their own. The county has one, makes it all try to collaborate together and, and do that cost sharing for the time that we need the individual to, to assist us. So we'll work that out over the next couple of days. We had National Night Out last week. That was a great event. It was well-attended. I think date attendance was probably down a little bit compared to prior years, but it's still COVID, the impact of COVID. And there's still a lot of people that really just don't want to get out into groups and, and, you know, engage in, in mass gatherings at this point. But it was a very good event. I think the community was very well represented by the entities over there, as well as the attendance from, from the public. We'll try to take a much more involved role next year. You know, this program has been ran really out of the county. Mr. Mito's compliance program has been being done on here now several years. We need to get engaged a little more ourselves as a, a city. You approved us publishing the ordinance, getting that out. I've also, we've never really had a procurement manual. We've had a couple of pages of, kind of guidelines of what to do. However, we've never really had a procurement policy. So there's a policy now that's circulating amongst senior staff that will go out to them, I believe, today, to the senior staff. I sent it to finance and procurement for them to review and, and comment. And of course, now we have a vacancy in procurement, but finance is looking at it, but it's a pretty solid policy. It's consistent with state law and we'll be bringing that to the commission. It's not going to be submitted to you in the form of an ordinance. It'll be submitted to you in the form of a policy. As well as our safety manual, our safety manual nearly predates OSHA. I think it was actually created in 1988. It is really old and inadequate when you look at documents. So that's been revamped and that is also circulated. The department has the directors for their input on what the manual looks like. Each one of those things are about 40, 45 pages thick in, in furbage with our procurement order and, uh, safety and, and risk control. I take that's, risk control very serious and we need to control our, our, our losses and our expenses. We have limited funding and we don't need to be spending on our losses or waste. So you will be getting those and again, they'll both come in policy format versus resol, uh, I have been in contact with the, the VOR on the motorized vessels on the river and working with them on it. The VOR sent me an email last night that they would not be opposed to us adopting an ordinance, restricting motorized vessels with the caveat that VOR can still do that when need to. And all those that are authorized by the New Mexico Voting Act. Very clear, the New Mexico Voting Act says the state parks has jurisdiction, enforcement jurisdiction on those waterways. The state police and county sheriffs, those are the only three entities. In fact, municipalities are excluded in the ordinance at all from enforcement. And I think that's because most municipalities don't have the water craft, they don't have the resources. And most sheriffs though, but you could San Juan County with Babo Lake, they do. Hurle Leo County, they're doing a lot of water rescues in the river. They do. Otherwise, most even sheriff's departments will be enforcing. So now it's still, I'm working with state parks on whether they would be opposed to the ordinance because they have the, it's a state law and they have the enforcement responsibility. I need their take on the ordinance and what, whether they're supportive of that or not. So as soon as I get any more details, I will meet with all of you, contact you and talk about whether you want to move forward with an ordinance or not.
Thank you.
With that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission regarding managers' report?
Um, as far as law on their, I think, game and fish too, they're, they're states where they can, but I think they, they can't do anything unless it's fishing purposes, right?
Right. They have no authority on the waterways as far as enforcement of the voting act.
Right.
Now, they would be looking at fishing and things like that on lakes and rivers, and that's not included in the voting act.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney Rubin, do you have a report at this time?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca, do you have a report at this time? Commissioner Aragon, do you have a report at this time?
No, your honor.
Commissioner Luna, do you have a report at this time? Guess she has left the building. Commissioner Forrester, do you have a report at this time?
Um, not really a report. I just want to address a few things, um, that we heard during public comments and the griping on our electrical system and our water system. But then we sit here and hear, um, presentation today that is addressing those concerns. So I just want to make it known that those don't go by the wayside. You're not purposely not fixing our water, not purposely fixing our lines or our electric system. And accidents happen. We can't stop lightning strikes. So when your transformer gets hit with a lightning strike, that's not, we can't control those things. Um, and with that being said, all the complaints, we have choices in life, right? If I was stuck somewhere for 17 years that I didn't like, I would probably not stay there for 17 years. And I think it just goes to show that it's how you're looking at it through your, through other people's eyes and through your own eyes. We had presentations, two presentations today, um, one, the truth or consequences game show, and they sat here and talked about how much they enjoyed our town and how much they utilized our resources that we have here. And so that is drawing people. And then we talked, we had another, um, presentation on how well our police department responds to those needs. So I feel like there are very good things. I know that we're always going to hear the people complaining, um, but we also need to look at the other side too and hear those things. So I appreciate the positives that we got today. Um, with that being said, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Um, and I would just like to say again, on top of what Manager Swingle said and as well as Commissioner Forrester, um, I would like to send out kudos to all of our employees. I, I mean, again, our, um, our department has sat here from 9:00 in the morning until 5:00 on Monday with ideas and thoughts and listening and communicating and, and coordinating with, with all of us on how we can make our community better financially, economically, and, and feasibly with, with what the issues we're going with. You know, we heard DOT today talking about some ideas and changes for our community downtown. Again, we have to remember too that Main and Broadway, Main Street, they're, they're the business loop of I-25. And so we have to coordinate with DOT a lot of times on things that we do. I know that they've talked about, as Commissioner Aragon stated, the, the barriers there on Coach and Day and Main Street. You know, we, we were in approval of those being put there because again, when there's cars parked, people coming across cannot see other cars. I know that a few years ago, um, my daughter was involved in an accident right there from a tourist that was driving through Truth or Consequences. And she was on the inside lane, the tourist was on the outside lane, and because of no signage and, and nothing there, they thought it was a two-way highway. So as my daughter was passing this way, the tourist went this way, and guess where my daughter went, right into that pole. Okay? So I've experienced the, the problems there. I know we've had a lot of local people talk about the speed, especially coming up around the corner right there by the old post office, the museum. You know, you make that corner and all of a sudden, guess what? There could be traffic, there could be people crossing. Uh, you know, I mean, you've got the theater on one side, you've got Passion Pie on the other. So again, we have to look at all of this. The electric, uh, department, the water department, they're always on top of things. You know, I feel for them, especially in these big thunderstorms too. I mean, these guys are out there in the middle of this drastic lightning storm, making sure that our electric is back on, I mean, it's back on right away. Sheriff, we can win the lottery or win a million dollars or $10 million or even the $5 million that was just given away to that lucky person yesterday evening. You know, we could, we could do more, but we have an older infrastructure that we need to work on and we just need to make sure that we appreciate and take care of everything that we have and support. And, and also as Commissioner Forrester said, if you don't like living here, you know, the highway runs both ways, go find someplace else that you appreciate living at and that, that you can be happy with because we live in a very small community, lived here all my life, and I love it here. I wouldn't go anyplace else. Also, I just want to kind of throw out there that I attended the Turtleback Trails Workshop that was scheduled last Thursday. It was at Rotary Park, talking about the ideas of the trails and the thoughts and everything. And, um, there was a lot of discussion about the elderly people, the handicap, handicapped have, have accessibilities to a lot of places, our parks and whatnot. You know, somebody had mentioned removing the skate, the skate park. You know, we have to stop and think. We shouldn't only have to take care of our seniors and our handicap, but we have to look out for our children. What do our children do? You know, um, I drive by the park almost every day. We've got this beautiful dog park that was established and sits up on top of the little hill right off of, of Broadway and, and Main Street there. But you see all the little dogs in the park. Well, the park is for our children to play in, to go and have a birthday party and a picnic, you know? Uh, again, it's not a problem taking your dog to the park, but there is a dog park and there is a people park. And we need the people park. We need to take care of our community, whether it be our seniors, our handicap, our children, because they're our future. They're what we need for the future. So we have to look at all of them and, and we like to listen to these ideas and thoughts. Also, one other thing I do want to say is, I know I talk a lot, but that's fine. I want to acknowledge our TRC, our Truth or Consequences Public Library, because I was just made aware on Monday that as of July 30th, they celebrated 88 years. Their 88th birthday. So kudos to our public library for being on board and in our community for 88 years. You know, that's almost been as long as we've been a city. So can you imagine? Um, and that's all I have to say. I thank Bruce every day for what he does and what he brings to the table and what he has to offer the city of TRC. I thank Tracy for all her hard work every day, um, as well as Carol, Attorney Rubin, you for staying on top of things. The new chief he seems to be doing and you for staying on top of things, the new chief he seems to be doing, and I hear good things and great things about him. So guys, keep up the work in the public too. All of you, just keep thoughts coming. Jagger?
I remember mine, people, the library used to be where Tracy and Bruce's office was.
Oh, yes, that was. That was the public, that was the public library. Thank you, Jagger. I remember that. That was the public library, it was right there where your office was, so yes.
I feel smarter already.
All right, guys, the next item is adjournments.
Motion.
Forster, make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Forster, Baca, and Aragon, seconded. All of the favor, aye, aye, those are carried.
I'm in. I didn't know that.